Good evening, I'm Jane Burkhart of the League of Women Voters of Champaign County. And on behalf of the League, NAACP, and the News Gazette, I welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. This portion of the forum is for candidates for Parkland College Board of Trustees. There are seven members on the Parkland Board of Trustees, and their positions are staggered, their terms, they're six-year terms. There are two positions that will be elected by the public this year. There are three candidates this evening. They are James Ayers, Thomas Bennett, and Sam McGrew. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. I will then ask questions submitted by the audience. Each candidate will then have one minute to answer these questions. And at the end of this forum, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. For you in the audience, we hope that you have questions for the candidates. There are people distributing cards for you to write down your questions. Please do that, and they'll be sent up here. By an earlier toss, coin toss, the order of opening statements was, the first person will be Mr. Bennett. So, Mr. Bennett, if you would like to start?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Bennett. I'm a volunteer. I've served three terms, and I'm your chairman of the board today. I live in Gibson City in Ford County, and I am the only trustee north of Champaign. I've been a high school science teacher, a computer trainer, an IT manager, at a large insurance company just up the road. I have two bachelor's degrees, an MBA, and a doctorate in business administration. Education matters. I'm excited about how Parkland College has grown and reached out to over 60 communities in our district. Since opening, over 275,000 students have gone through Parkland's doors. Some transfer to four-year schools, others for certificates, and others just to learn. Parkland College is financially sound, and we provide a quality education at a very reasonable cost. We have new programs. We've expanded our ag programs. We've created our new diesel program, encouraged the use of dual credit for high school students, and worked with the University of Illinois to develop Parkland pathways for students to transfer there. In fact, more students transfer to U of I from Parkland than anywhere else. As a trustee, I work to build relationships. I voluntarily engage with legislators, lobbyists, and governmental agencies at the state and at the national level for Parkland. I am past chair of the Illinois Trustees Association, who lobby state and national leaders on behalf of approximately 1 million Illinois students. Recently, I was chair of the National Trustee Association that lobby our legislators on behalf of Parkland, 1,200 community and junior colleges, and over 11 million students. In fact, the Parkland College district is bigger than the district of a state representative in Illinois. I've worked hard to help position Parkland for the future in meeting community needs. However, there is much, much more to do. And I ask for your vote to return to the board and to stay the course. My name is Tom Bennett. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Ayers.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, the News Gazette, and the city of Champaign, and the residents of the Parkland College 505 district, and the viewers at home. My name is James Ayers. I'm from Monticello, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Board of Trustees. If I'm reelected, this will be my fifth, six-year term on the Board of Trustees. I was first elected in 1989. Parkland College is an incredible place, a place where students, those who have attended in the past, those attending now, and thousands of future students can learn in order to improve their lives and that of their families. Over the years, I am heartfelt when I hear from students and family members about how Parkland impacted or changed their lives. Being a private business, through my law practice in Monticello, and involvement in my family's business, grants me a unique perspective to represent the residents of District 505. My public service, in addition to Parkland Board service, includes being mayor of the city of Monticello for eight years, and serving as an officer and on the state and national boards of directors of community colleges, and the participation with local service and fraternal organizations over the years. I would ask for your support in maintaining the Parkland College as a premier educational institution, meeting the needs of our students and our residents. The governance of Parkland College is entrusted to a Board of Trustees, of elected, seven elected members, and a student trustee. We have a very good group of experienced trustees now on our board, and I would like to be a part of Parkland's continued success. On April 9th, please vote for James Ayers.
Thank you. And now, Mr. McGrew.
Thank you very much. I'm Sam McGrew. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, the News Gazette, the city of Champaign, and all of you in the audience that have taken the time to investigate all of the offices that we're here to talk about this evening. I'm a native of central Illinois, actually raised in west-central Illinois. I began as a social studies teacher and an economics teacher. I became a building principal, and then spent 10 years in the Illinois General Assembly. During that time, I was the chairman of the Higher Education Committee for four years, and the minority spokesman in higher education for two terms. During that time, I was actually the chief sponsor of the funding for the community college system. Prior to that time, all community college hours were funded at the same rate regardless of what you were teaching. And it was abundantly clear that it costs a whole lot more for a nurses program, for example, than it does for a general studies program. Parkland does do a good job, and frankly, these two gentlemen have done a good job on behalf of Parkland. But I bring a different perspective. I have spent 17 years as superintendent in K-12 schools. I know more about students transitioning into higher education. I have ideas about how to make it easier and more successful. The two things we really need to investigate at Parkland are, first of all, the opportunity to develop an area vocational center, where all students and juniors and seniors in high schools in all of the communities that have an opportunity to come dual-credit or non-dual credit and take classes there. And I would invite that discussion to be with the superintendents, the counselors, local businessmen, and Parkland. And secondly, I'm quite concerned about the ACT requirements to get into various programs at Parkland. I think that it's unfair, and that it does cause us to get more students into the remediation program.
Thank you. So, we will start with the questions now. The first question I have received is, and I'll start with Mr. Ayers, please. Why are Parkland admission standards the highest in the state?
Well, I don't know that they're the highest in the state, but I do know that we have, over the years, developed a program, essentially, that we have to have students at a certain level in order to be qualified for that program. And we have a reputation of being one of the largest feeders to the University of Illinois. And I think part of that is because we provide qualified students after two years that can transfer to the University of Illinois and do as well as native students who've spent all four years there. So, to meet the needs of our students, we have to have students who are qualified to be in our programs. And as an example, do we want to have a nurse out in nursing providing care to people who is not able academically and otherwise to do the work and to bring the program down? I think the answer is no, we don't. And so, we do have those standards. It's been something that's been there during my 24 years, that's been part of the process of having qualified students.
Mr. McGrew, would you like to talk to that issue?
Certainly. Parkland does indeed have the highest of requirements for admissions to the various programs. In fact, they have a requirement of 23 in English when the ACTs themselves say the college readiness is 18. They're discouraging students when that's not necessary. I'm very concerned that we are obviously trying to take care of the students that are transfers, and I'm proud of them. I don't want to diminish that program. But by the same token, we need to have opportunities expanded for our youth, not trying to get opportunities, close the door for them. We need to talk with businesses and find out what kinds of vocational training is they need for their shop and provide that. We don't need math, reading, English scores that are much higher than even ACT says is college readiness. So, I would like to examine that process. In fact, I brought that up to Dr. Ramage, and he informs me that indeed, I'm right, and they are in the process of looking at some of those.
Mr. Bennett, would you like to speak to that?
Absolutely. Standards are important, as we set guidelines and rules, et cetera, for students across Parkland College. That's critical to do. And along with that, I think, as Parkland works to a variety of things, there's a number of programs that we try to encourage with student success, student access, along those ways. For example, there's something that we've just started here recently with first-year communities. It's showing real promise for helping to guide new full-time development students to into their career fields. We also have a first-year community for African-American male students called Together That We Achieve, which targets students and demographics with intrusive wraparound support. So, what we try to do also is to find support groups, support ways to help our students grow. Standards are important. Standards are important to do that. And I think part of the things that this question brought up, I think it's part of the process in which Parkland College looks and discusses. We are a shared governance in our group, and also across the Parkland College, as we look at ideas and discussions. And of course, that's one of those things that comes up, I'm sure, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question says, "What was your thought process when you recently raised tuition rates over 5%?" So, Mr. Bennett, I guess.
What we have tried to do over a period of time is try to deal with the tuition a little bit, in fact, we've increased tuition a little bit every year. And we've tried to do this in order to control the impact on students that will be taking those. Perhaps 15 years ago, perhaps even longer, there was a period of time that we didn't do anything with tuition, and then we ended up having to turn around and really increase it, and we saw the impact that had on students. And it was not what we wanted to do. So, we tried to provide some additional increase each year. At the same time, we also understand that Parkland provides tremendous quality at a tremendous value.
Mr. Ayers, that same issue?
Well, every year, we struggle with tuition, and we work with the students, student government, student trustee, to get input. In fact, the input that we received many years ago from our student trustee was, rather than waiting and having a large jump, maybe even sometimes 18, 20%, we needed to have incremental increases regularly in order to allow families to plan for what they can expect as far as a reasonable cost for their education and tuition. So, I think that it's clear that we have a good value for what we're providing, and we, I think, our rate wouldn't be much more than 5%, but it's probably closer, a bit over 5%. But we try to maintain our small increments, it's always less than 10%, that is necessary in order to provide adequate funding so that we can run our operation in an efficient and effective and accountable way.
Mr. McGrew, do you have a comment?
Thank you. Obviously, I didn't get to weigh in on that consideration, but here again, I would like to look at it from the point of view of the students. It was over 5% raise this time. Cost of living is down by 1 or 2%. It is true, I've handled budgets, you do need to do things incrementally, but also, we need to look at the fact that Parkland also has $13.5 million in their surplus budget. They have another $7.5 million in working cash. It seemed to me that if you need a fund for a reserve, when students are suffering, when the economy is not percolating, that's the kind of time you would look at, perhaps not having the full amount that they did. In fact, because they had an agreement with students, it was more than the $5 usual raise. So, and I think we kind of need to evaluate all these kinds of things when we're investigating what we should be charging students. It is over $3,300 tuition. Frankly, the total cost for Parkland is about $6,000 a year now, including books and fees.
Thank you. The next question is, "How is Parkland funded? How much of the budget is generated by taxes, tuition, et cetera?" Mr. Ayers, do you want to start?
Sure, I'd be glad to start. Well, originally, community colleges were funded with the concept of about 1/3 would come from the state of Illinois, 1/3 coming from tuition, and 1/3 coming from property owners. In our recent budget workshop that our financial people put together for us before we raised tuition, we find that now the state of Illinois is only providing 10% of our total budget instead of the 33% that they should have from the original drafting of the, and the proposal to start community colleges. And then, property taxes are 33 to 34%, and then the student is picking up the difference. And it's on the backs of the student that is bearing the large cost. Our CFO, basically, we have a chart that shows that tuition is going up. At the same time, the opposite direction is the amount of money that comes from the state of Illinois, and they're just not doing their share. And it's going to unfortunately continue to be that way until the state of Illinois gets their financial affairs in order.
Thank you. And let's see, would you like to comment on that, Mr. McGrew?
Yes. I do not disagree with any of the figures given by Dr. Ayers. The state of Illinois is woefully inadequate. I'm sure that's a huge surprise to everyone here. In fact, the whole state is a total embarrassment to us all. But I would also point out that Parkland's tuition is 12th highest of the 14 community colleges in the state. So, it's not like we're saying that we're holding the line completely. I just would like to view it from the student's point of view and say, you know, what do we have to do to maintain our excellent standards? And would like to approach it from that point of view.
Mr. Bennett?
And I agree with what we've said in terms of, basically, it's a three-legged table or a three-legged chair or stool, whatever, where the money, like, comes from three different directions, the student, property tax, and of course, the state, which has had tremendous challenges from, for a number of years. Of course, we've heard the pension issues, which is tremendously on the TV and right now in the news, and affordable care with Obamacare. There was several issues that we just don't know where we're heading with those things. But back to the question with the tuition and how it's coming from, those are things that we have to deal with. And what we do also at Parkland is it's something that we involve, again, group discussions, we employ our student trustee involved with that. We involve a number of people to looking at the issues in a variety of directions, and this is not lightly taken discussion or decision as we go forward. So, it's truly a challenge. Every community college in the state of Illinois, along with businesses and industry, has to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Along that same line, is there a foundation fundraising at Parkland, and how could that be used? And Mr. McGrew?
Yes, there is a fundraising foundation. In fact, the foundation, I believe, awarded somewhere around $250,000 worth of grants last year. I'm sure that everybody that's worked with it wishes that it was much larger and had more money to dole out. Beyond that, I don't know any more of the question.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, we do have a foundation, and Carl Meyer, I don't know if he's here tonight, but has done a tremendous job in helping to keep things going. They do a variety of things, fundraisers, they have scholarships for people to help them participate in, which is a tremendous opportunity to give back to your local communities as well. So, that is, of course, a concern, that they're trying to do that, but they can't do it all by themselves. Again, we have a number of issues, and I think what Parkland has to do, we have to be deliberate about the choices that we make. The budget is a powerful tool as we set priorities. We have many strong programs here at Parkland, but again, we have to be careful and balance our revenues and our expenses, and we're truly supportive of the foundation as well. But it's just, it's one piece of trying to make things come together, for the good of our students, the good of our families, and for the good of our communities.
Mr. Ayers?
The foundation is really a very important part of our process. It allows us to have scholarship money available for students so that they can take more classes or so they can reduce the number of hours that they have to work. Most of our students work, on average, about 25 to 30 hours a week. And so, in addition to their needs at home, they have job requirements as well as their academic requirements of participating in their classes. So, it is a real challenge. I've been on the foundation board 18 years, and I was there when we hired Carl Meyer. In fact, I'm the only board member that is still on the board. I'm also actually president of the foundation. We have really increased our efforts in trying to raise funds locally, and it really is necessary to provide for the students. Carl took our foundation from one of the ones that worried about whether, where we would invest our $50,000 CD, to an institution where he's raised over $25 million over the years for buildings. The Tony Knoll Building is a prime example, and for scholarships.
Thank you. The next question is, "What is Parkland doing, or could or should be doing, to prepare individuals for entry-level manufacturing jobs?" Mr. Bennett?
Okay, for entering manufacturing jobs?
Manufacturing is the question, yes.
Specifically around the manufacturing piece?
Well, maybe you can expound.
Okay. Again, I think it's a number of things in there. I know that we have set up some programs with labor to help do some of these classes that are set up, that actually held at Parkland College. But also, I'd like to refer back to a couple of things that we've done in support of, called first-year communities, where we show real promise of getting new, full-time development students into desired career fields, and I would think this would be part of that. We also have a first-year community for African-American male students, if that falls in that line of manufacturing, in which we also help and support and try to provide some support around them, and not just have them take classes and then go home, but try to involve them in a number of ways as they work through the process and learning the classes and learning the trade.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers?
Well, Parkland, actually, in the last couple of years, has really made some really significant impact in the manufacturing preparation of students. Until just the last couple of years, we've never had access to Craft as a partner. The last few years, we've gotten partnerships with Craft, and Craft will interview 1,000 applicants before they find one that they're willing to hire. And that's because folks that they're interviewing lack the skill set necessary to meet their standards. We have an industrial maintenance program that we've set up with excess equipment that Craft has provided us, that provides the entry level to those kinds of positions. And so, it's been a great partnership. Many, many other companies in our community take advantage of those, that training and those educational opportunities to provide a workforce. Part of it is the fact that many people don't appreciate the good value of working in manufacturing, and that's something we have to raise, the perception among the family, the parents, that this is a good job.
Thank you. Mr. McGrew?
Thank you. Well, interestingly, about 75% of Parkland students either graduated in occupational area or a certificate area. These are the skills that basically are going into manufacturing as well as construction and those kinds of areas. We're spending $9.2 million on buildings at Parkland. I go back to the fact that Bloomington, Danville, Decatur, all have vocational areas, vocational centers, where students can come in and take those kinds of classes. Those classes are designed in conjunction with local businessmen who say, "I need these kinds of skills taught in this area vocational center." And so, my proposal would be that, again, we sit with our leaders in local schools, with our counselors, with our businessmen, and say, "Can we do that? And how do we do that? Who is in charge of it?" There's a million questions of which I don't have the answer, but I would like to pose the questions to many of them.
Thank you. The next question says, "Does Parkland College do anything to help students who receive loans to attend Parkland repay those loans?" Mr. Ayers?
Well, we have a pretty good financial aid office, and I believe our record right now of loan defaults is maybe in the neighborhood of, say, 17% as I recall. And it's something where we want to discourage students from taking loans. I think that's partly why we have such a high percentage of students who are actually working, because they're trying to keep the amount of debt down. And we have students who, you know, it's hard to balance everything, and I think that's one of the reasons that the students are concerned about having enough funds, which utilize the lending. But at least from my perspective, I think we want to try to keep the number of students that have to borrow at the least amount necessary, and then we provide counseling through our career center and for job opportunities. We have job placement. We have as many opportunities, and we have an excellent financial aid office that works with students, but they have to come in to be, to take advantage of that and participate. So, I'm satisfied that we're doing a good job on that.
Mr. McGrew?
Actually, I primarily would agree with Dr. Ayers of what our efforts are. I would, again, go back to the student's point of view once again and say, one of the reasons that it takes longer to get through Parkland and you need more money is because we don't have enough dual credits in an area vocational center type of setting, as well as we're saying that approximately 70% of our students need remediation programs because of our higher ACT requirements, or they go take the tests that Parkland requires them if the scores are not high enough on ACT. If we can get through students, get the students through the college quicker, they would have fewer loans. But Parkland does work hard to try to keep those at a minimum, and frankly, they have a much better record than most of the community colleges in the state of Illinois, and I applaud them for that.
Mr. Bennett?
It is a concern. The loans and helping students work through that, they face multiple things besides studies and families and everything else at home, they have a lot of things to balance. And I think Parkland College has tried hard to help with that issue, with the concerns. We do work with them. We do encourage them to, of course, find jobs, find work. We help them to do that. We also encourage the Pell Grant issues in terms of, we meet with our legislators and make sure they realize the concerns that we're having. It's important to do that as well, and that's a job that trustees need to do, that we share our concerns with the legislators, both in the state and nationally. If I may for just a moment, one thing we continually tell our legislators is that we, community colleges are economic generators, that we can help generate tax dollars, and that is a nice thing that legislators like to hear. A 2001 study found that state taxpayers see a rate of return of about 14% on their fiscal support of community colleges. 95% of community colleges stay in Illinois and pay taxes. That's wonderful news, and that's the kind of thing we need to share with our state legislators in terms of this, in terms of help for our students. Thank you.
The next question is, "What do you think is the Parkland Board's role in increasing African-American graduation rates?" Mr. McGrew?
I think that the role is to begin with our school guidance counselors and do a lot of the same kind of work within our local high schools that we do in our other programs, and that is to meet and set up mentor programs, to work with businesses, most importantly, say, "Come with us, come to our vocational center, and there are jobs waiting for you when you're out." That would really attract students, especially students of color. And we need to especially work in the trades and labor. If you've known that any of the plumbers and electricians and so on and so forth, we are really, really deficit in a responsible representation there.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
I think there's a number of things that we have done and need to continue to do. I mentioned the support groups in terms of the first-year communities, the first-year community for African-American males. Those are both two ideas and plans that we've actually just put together in the last, oh, recently, that we hope will help our students continue to grow. And that's part of this whole thing which President Obama has talked about, student success. Not just student access, but once they get in there, they need to be successful and they need to be able to graduate. And that's something that we're trying to do at Parkland College as well. So, again, the first-year communities, first-year communities for African-American. Also, I'd like to talk about for just a moment, we've encouraged diversification of our faculty. We realize we live in a multicultural society, and we've worked hard to increase the number of diverse faculty to 27% employment level. That's been a challenge to do, but it's been important to do. And we continue to focus and support all of our minority students, as well as all of our students at Parkland College.
Mr. Ayers?
Well, I think that we've had, when I joined the board in 1989, one of the problems was trying to find our next president. In 1991, we hired Dr. Zalima Harris. Dr. Harris was, is, one of the most outstanding college, community college presidents in the nation, and she was here for 16 years, and a lot of effort and success that we've had has been due to Dr. Harris's leadership. She and the board work closely together, and I'm proud of the effort that we have. It's not an easy task. It is a very difficult situation, and even with the most outstanding leadership that we had, we still, it's a challenge, and it's work that's still to be done. I was fortunate then also to be on the board when we hired Dr. Ramage, and he has continued to follow in Dr. Harris's... we hired Dr. Ramage. And he has continued to follow in Dr. Harris's footsteps as far as providing that kind of leadership. And so the board is very committed, and has been from the very beginning of my time, in seeing that we have academic success for those students. And we continue to be committed to see that that happens.
Thank you. This question says, "I see billboards for two trustees running together for reelection. Why the tag team approach?" Mr. Bennett?
The, I think I've been on the board three, three terms. So this is 18 years, I guess. For me, I'm proud to be a part of Parkland College. I know Jim Ayers. I'm proud to know him on the board. I value his ideas, and he's a tremendous value to the Parkland College Board. And we believe that I can help Parkland College, and I'll let him speak for himself. But I believe, again, I've been able to add a lot of value for that, and I am honored that he would be willing to be on the same billboard with me, or the brochures, et cetera. The goal is, it's not about us, it's about Parkland College, and what we can do to help our students, our communities. That's what this comes down to.
Mr. Ayers?
Well, as Tom noted, we've run together for three, this is nothing new. We've run together three times with joint advertising and that kind of thing. The important part of being a board member is connecting with the community. And over my time, and over Dr. Bennett's time, we've been out to every high school board three times. And that means visiting on other days of the week, when our board doesn't meet, we have visited every high school board three times, all 28 high schools in our district. Now, why do we do that? The reason is because we can't get the high school boards to come and see us. We sent out invitations to over 300 high school board members. We got one invitation back that they would come to a meeting that we were hosting on our campus. So Dr. Harris, again, I'll give her great credit for this. It's like, if we can't get them to come to us, we have to go to them. And so we journeyed out to all these high schools over the time period. We continued that tradition. We also, during our last round, we had 22 visits to communities. We hosted town hall meetings, 22 different communities we were in during that one-year period. This is board members at these meetings that we were there.
Thank you. Mr. McGrew?
Well, thank you. I guess I should thank the League of Women Voters. This is probably the first time that I've got to come between these two.
[laughing]
I think it is an interesting scenario. They certainly have the right to campaign any way they want. And frankly, that's probably okay, because I have a different vision for Parkland. These two gentlemen have worked hard and worked honorably. I don't question that whatsoever. We have a different vision for Parkland. And my vision is more into what the students' needs, and how we can better serve those student needs. And if we can figure out how to do that, then that's my vision. And both of these gentlemen have, as I said, done marvelous things. Both of them have been leaders nationally. I probably won't do that, but I hope to be leaders for our freshmen and sophomores at Parkland.
Thank you. This question, "Where should Parkland be growing in programs, or, and/or, I guess, are there programs that should be added or expanded?" Mr. Ayers?
Well, I think we've been doing that over the last 20 years. I think when I first ran to the board in 1989, I visited with farm implement dealers. And they said, "You got to bring back the diesel program." Well, it took us 10 years to do it, but we brought back the diesel program. So not only do we bring the diesel program back, we've doubled the diesel program. Then we brought in another diesel program through Case IH. Jobs, very similar to our Ford Asset Program, where Case IH dealers, primarily Burkeys, identify students, and we work with them. They put them through a program where they're working as well as doing this. It's all across the board. Our advisory groups are critical to help us identify those areas and how we need to develop our curriculum, how we need to develop our job opportunities and qualifications for our students. But again, I need to go back to the point. We got to have better qualified students coming out of high school. When 70% of our high school graduates have to take one remedial class that comes to Parkland, I think there's something wrong with that.
Mr. Bennett?
I appreciate the question. As I've gone around knocking on doors and visiting different towns, I see a lot of smiles at Parkland College and the things that we have done. One of them, I did stop in at the Mansfield Library, and the lady said, "You know, what are you guys doing about a library certification?" And I said, "I don't know. Let me talk about it. Let's see what we can do." And so we're going to look into that. But I think there's some other areas, too. I think security is a possibility, something you can look at. 9/11 really changed a whole lot of things. That might be something you can look at. But there's a whole process at Parkland College in which we have a number of folks involved, the governance, to help us identify what do we really need to focus on? What helps with the jobs, with the businesses, with our communities to truly make a difference? The advisory groups that Jim touched on, those are closely engaged with what's happening, and Parkland College is very closely tied in to them. It's that important piece of tying back to the community.
Mr. McGrew?
The ways that we need to expand, frankly, are the ways that market place will tell us to expand. And that's the reason I would like to see the area vocational center developed with much more input from local businessmen saying, "This is what we need for skills in our workforce." An opportunity for students to take that earlier in their junior and senior years, and an opportunity to say that we will be providing specific jobs for you when you are graduating. And frankly, I think it's an embarrassment of Parkland more than the local school districts when I read that 90, I'm sorry, 70% of our students need a remediation program. The fact of the matter is, if you design an ACT score that is five points higher than what the ACT says is necessary for college readiness, believe it or not, you probably won't hit that with more than 30% of your students. I think that is an internal problem, and one that I want to look at. Yes, I want remediation when it's necessary, but I want students not to sit in there and take remediation programs just to keep the doors open.
Thank you. Can or should the number of full-time faculty be increased? Mr. McGrew?
Actually, that's a question I am totally unprepared to answer.
[laughing] Okay. Mr. Bennett?
Before I jump into that, I'm going to take five seconds if I can to go back to an earlier question. We talked about remedial math, remedial reading. The percentages we're hearing, 65% to 70% around Parkland College. That's also across Illinois. It's higher in Chicago. And also, if you look across the United States, it's roughly 65% to 70% remedial math, remedial reading. Folks, we have an issue across our country that we need to face and work with. As far as the part-time, full-time, that's a relationship or a factor based on the classes that we have to teach, based on the full-time that we have today, based on the number of students that are coming. And I'm sure there's a number of things that we look at to determine, well, how many classes do we have? How many more do we need to have? At that point, we look to see, you know, can we find part-time folks to help do that? It's a matter of students, teachers, costs, just a number of things there. I think we're somewhere in the ballpark, what, 45% to 55% part-time, full-time, and that's not that much different from other schools around the state of Illinois.
Mr. Ayers?
I think we probably have a little higher percentage than many other community colleges in the state, with approximately 50%. But, you know, the issue of, when you hire a faculty person and they're full-time, Dr. Peg Lee at Oakton, last weekend at our meeting in Chicago, as far as, talked about, that's a $2 million investment, because you hire that person, they get tenure, and they're there. And that's $2 million of payroll that you're going to have for the life of that person. So when you make that commitment, and you say, "Okay, now I'm going to hire everybody that's going to be full-time," well, that's a lot of financial constraints. And we have to have flexibility. We have to have people from business and industry that have special skills, that can teach certain classes that might not generally be available in just regular academic preparation. So there's a lot of factors involved in making that determination. I know our board, when Dr. Harris was here, and again, continuing with Dr. Ramage, are committed to try to have a very solid number of full-time faculty, because they provide so much to the institution as far as the culture, the curriculum development, and all of those kinds of things. So we are committed to as many full-time faculty as we can have arranged.
Thank you. Now, we are ready to have the closing statements, two minutes each again. And again, back by the coin toss, we go in the same order. We start with Mr. Bennett.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, and the News Gazette for sponsoring this event. My name is Tom Bennett, and I ask for your vote for Parkland College trustee. As one of your current trustees, I am proud of what we at Parkland have done to connect a business, to labor, to schools, students, families, and communities within our district. We're financially sound. We positioned ourselves with new facilities and programs for future growth, and jobs, and ideas. We built good relationships with our legislators and agencies of the trustee, at the president, and other administrative levels. We have a strong relationship with the University of Illinois and other four-year schools. And we have built and maintained a strong and supportive culture at Parkland focused on improvement and shared governance. As recognition of Parkland's hard work, Parkland recently received reaccreditation from the Higher Learning Commission, and that we have met the highest standards in the nation for community colleges. That says a lot about our staff, our administration, our board, and the entire Parkland College family. Yes, we have more to do. We continue, need to focus on financial situations and make sure we're there. Continue to tell our very positive story that community colleges are economic generators, and I talked about earlier. 14% basically return on fiscal support for community colleges. 95% of community colleges' students stay in Illinois and pay taxes. We need to do more with data to help drive results in our strategic planning process that we know. We also need to work on student access, and also student success, and focus more on helping students graduate, and not just go to school, but finish. Despite tough economic times, Parkland College has continued to grow and reach out to many communities, and has made a difference in the lives of thousands of students, of parents, and of families. Help me keep this success going. My name is Tom Bennett, and I ask for your vote on April 9th for Parkland College trustee.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers?
Serving on the Parkland College Board of Trustees has been an incredible experience. I've had the opportunity to be part of a great educational marvel, and that marvel is the community college. Developed by Dr. William Rainey Harper, who was a leader at the University of Chicago in 1901, he came up with the concept of a community college, then called a junior college. And that was implemented at Joliet. And so Joliet, in 1901, took the top floor of their high school and created a community college. And since then, we've seen over the years, community colleges have blossomed and grown, and meant tons of value to their local community. Community colleges are governed for the benefit of the community. How could it be more relevant, more accountable, more beneficial than having local governance for the benefit of the local community? Each year, a highlight that I have is to see students walk across the stage at graduation. Our ceremony occurs as it has from the very first graduation in the Great Hall at Cranert Center for the Performing Arts on the University of Illinois campus. The students are so proud. The families are clapping and yelling words of encouragement, because they know their student is completing something and getting their certificate or degree. How can it get much better than that? And we want to increase the number of students who complete, and that's been a commitment our board has made recently, and we're moving forward to making that happen. Each year, it gives me affirmation to know that my participation as a board member matters. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, the News Gazette, and those who will vote in the April 9th election, and to all the viewers. We've had, we have a great Board of Trustees at Parkland College, and I'm honored to serve with seven other outstanding folks who dedicate their time and energy to this volunteer position. I would like to continue to make a difference, and I would ask for your continued support to do that on April 9th by voting for James Ayers. It does matter who is elected to the Board of Trustees at Parkland College, and it should matter to you. Elect James Ayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. McGrew?
Let me begin by thanking the League of Women Voters again, the NAACP, the News Gazette, the City of Champaign. It's a pleasure to be here and participate in the democratic process. I am very proud of Parkland. I think Parkland College has done a remarkable job, especially for those students that are going on to four-year institutions. They're very proud of saying that they perform better than students that started at the four-year institutions. I don't want to lose that. But I served in Illinois General Assembly with Jeanne Chapman, who sponsored the bill saying that all of the state of Illinois had to be in a community college district. And the reason she did that was so that we would have vocational training. And Parkland has kind of gotten a little bit off of that course, I think. I don't want to diminish our upper-level students, but I also want to return to the possibility of having additional opportunities for students in an area vocational center, ones that are working with businesses looking for specific jobs. We're told that we've got 60, or 70% of our students need remediation classes, but we're also told that 30% of them go on to the University of Illinois. That somehow seems incongruent with each other. We need to take a better look at what we're doing for our students to get specifically into vocational training. And I want to take that student view to the board to represent you and the students at Parkland College. So on April the 9th, if you would vote for Sam McGrew, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all three of our candidates. Now, we must all remember to vote. Election Day is Tuesday, April 9th. Remember to vote. Thank you very much.[1797.86][1797.86][applause]